Just giving one more moment until Dr. Kazivan's still having problems logging in. I'm hoping he'll get in any second.
Should be going to YouTube now.
Okay.
You're on YouTube as well, Margaret, now.
Okay, great. All right, well, we have a quorum. So I'd like to call the meeting of the Narragansett Regional School District's School Committee Order. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and Mrs. Mattson's going to be holding our flag this evening, so thank you. We'll start. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, well, good evening, everyone. I do want to note that this meeting is being livestreamed and recorded by Templeton Community TV, so once again, thank you to TCTV for making that happen. We were having a couple of connectivity issues. Dr. Kazivan is trying to get in. I wanted to kick off the meeting so we could take care of some housekeeping things, and hopefully he'll be able to join us momentarily. But on the call, I do want to identify who we have with us tonight. We have from the school committee, Mrs. Mattson, Mr. Marx, and Mr. Marx is on a phone at this point, Mrs. Chartier, and Mrs. Trifilo, and myself, Mrs. Hughes. As I mentioned, Dr. Kazivan should be joining us shortly. We have Assistant Superintendent Kate Kalis. We have our Facilities Director, Rick Moulton. We have our wonderful Admin, Susan Varney. We also have Mike Netto, who we'll be introducing shortly, so he's on here, and we'll hear from him shortly. Dr. Kazivan will introduce him once we get there. We also have, from the NDEA, our Teachers Union, Eric Eibin, and I thought I saw Lisa Parker. Oh, there you are, Lisa, sorry. You jumped from black screen to a square, and Lisa Parker on from the Teachers Union tonight. I am assuming Mr. Mason will be joining us shortly from the school committee, so once he comes on, I'll identify that and the time as well. We'll take care of some housekeeping details. We did have minutes that were sent out that hopefully everyone was able to review. If someone is ready, I would take a motion to approve the meeting minutes of October 21st, 2020.
So moved.
So I have a motion from Mrs. Trifilo. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second from Mrs. Mattson. Is there any discussion or questions on the minutes as they were prepared? Okay, seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mrs. Mattson?
I wasn't there, so I will abstain.
Okay. Mr. Marx?
Yeah.
Mrs. Chartier?
Yes.
Mrs. Trifilo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes, so we have a majority of our quorum who votes in favor, so those have passed. I did want to note for the minutes that Mrs. Robichaud and Mrs. Kojel are not with us this evening, so they will not be attending tonight's meeting for the school committee. We have that. There are no bills and payroll for us to review, so we'll skip over that. I see Mr. Mason has joined us. I have that at 4:37, so we'll add Mr. Mason to our list. Okay. Next up is public input. Mrs. Varney, I know I checked earlier, but I just wanted to check in with you and see if we had received any public input in the short time period in between when we last spoke.
I have not.
No, okay. So no public input. We will keep an eye on the chat stream to see if we do get any questions that we can either answer as we go along, or we'll take them down and address them at next week's meeting, because we are having a regular meeting next week as well. Trying to just kind of hedge a little here, because I'm hoping that Dr. Kazivan can join us. Next up is the NDEA, so I will turn it over to Mrs. Parker or Mr. Eibin.
I am here.
Okay.
I cannot get my camera to work.
Oh, goodness. Okay, well...
I don't know. I'm here, though. And I taught all day with my camera on, so I don't know what the problem is, but here we are. I sent a letter to the school committee on October 21st about a concern that we had and has come up several times with the school committee. And in fact, the problem I wrote about with Facebook postings and social media has come up for even school committee members, the superintendent, myself. So it's not the first time this issue has come up, but I did want to read the letter to you all as a statement from the NDEA about this issue. So I wrote it to you, Mrs. Hughes, the school committee chair. On behalf of the NDA, I would like to alert you to a concern we have regarding the treatment of a member of the Teachers Association attacked on social media by members of the community. Recently, we had a member of the association accused of taking actions against a family student based on race. Because the community person posted these claims on a popular social website, the accusation spread fast and without anyone to challenge the facts. At the direction of the district, the member was ordered not to respond to defend themselves, nor did the district take action to stop the disinformation from being spread. The employee was left without a personal defense or the presumption of innocence in the community. The mob on Facebook held the trial, pronounced the sentence guilty as charged, and the member had since been labeled racist. Adding salt to the wound, the district, rather than defend the teacher, decided to investigate the teacher. Still having no ability to defend themselves to the public charge of racism, they were muzzled from responding to the social media claims. Even more people on social media discussed and debated the claims made against the employee without any challenge or clarification. Even now, six months later, the person has never had an opportunity to clear their name on social media or refute the claims of racism that has tarnished their name. These events are deeply troubling to the association. The idea that members of the school district can be maligned and lied about, labeled racist without any recourse or public correction is disturbing. Furthermore, the knowledge that our district would rather the controversy go away than allow us to defend ourselves is even more troubling. Charges of racial discrimination against an employee have the ability to cause serious harm to the reputation of any teacher. Rather consider the employee innocent of racism first. We believe the district catered to the complaint and negative public opinion rather than protecting the teacher. This has caused considerable disappointment to spread among the leadership of the NDEA. We believe the district should review, revise its policy regarding how it handles public communication and the use of social media by the public against district employees. If this past event serves an example, any claim made by any person through social media left unchallenged, regardless of the truth or worse, could become the start of an investigation against any one of us. An angry person with an axe to grind, need me to pick the target, choose from a hot-button list, racism, sexism, financial corruption, cheating, stealing, could all become fodder for the mob. At the least, the teacher deserves an apology for becoming a victim in what is a modern-day witch hunt, tried and found guilty of racism by a Facebook post. And I guess what I just want to add to that is, I know that some of you have been dragged through the mud as well. This isn't something that's just happening to teachers. I know it's, and I know it's not just our district. And I don't know if the Massachusetts Association of School Committees offers any advice, if there's... It just feels so helpless to be accused of something on social media, and for reasons that many of us have been told, you know, "Don't reply," and then it just stays there. And so we just wanted to bring that to your attention. We know you guys have been through some of this yourselves, so I know it's not news to you that people badmouth us on Facebook or badmouth you on Facebook, or whatever the social media is. And so that letter, I gave it to you the 21st. I couldn't make the last school committee meeting, and so I wanted to make sure I read it at this school committee meeting for everyone here.
Thank you, Mr. Eibin, for reading that. I did receive the letter, and I'll distribute it to the rest of the committee now that you've read it, because I knew that was your intent, was to read it at one of these meetings. Obviously, social media and other outlets is disconcerting, at the least, for most of us. And it's a difficult topic to discuss. We have, I have reached out to MASCE just to have some discussions about how we could handle things and how we can handle things as a public body. Obviously, we don't get involved in personnel matters, so there's some division in responsibilities. So we walk a very fine line, and, you know, it's unfortunate that people use the anonymity of a keyboard to attack, you know, as you know, unless it's written down in a formal type of atmosphere by a letter. It really doesn't exist, but that doesn't mean that it's not out there for the masses. So we certainly understand your concerns, and we'll continue to have discussions on what we may be able to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anything else from the NDEA that you wanted to discuss at this point?
No, well, I guess, you know, continue to look at the numbers in the local towns and region as COVID spikes, and we had a great meeting, a good discussion yesterday with the Health Committee that gives advice to the school committee, and I hope we can come up with some firm numbers for how to address, you know, the continuing rise of COVID, so we can make decisions for the safety of the kids and the teachers.
Great, well, thank you. You know, and once again, I, you know, I know we did some oscillating over the last few weeks, and I'm looking at Dr. Kazivan in his square, because that's our new word, oscillate. And I just wanted to commend everybody for the ability to quickly move from our hybrid model to remote and back. It's a testament to everybody's work ethic to make these things happen. Obviously, safety is a big concern, so we appreciate, you know, the teachers and the staff and everybody for being able to do that. So, all right. Dr. Kazivan has joined us. Yes, Mrs. Trifilo?
Yeah, I just want a clarification from Mr. Eibin. Did he intend that letter to be to us in October? Or did he want us to wait so he could read it personally? Because he said that he wrote it in October and that we had a copy, so I didn't know what his intent was.
Yeah, my intent, Madam Chair, was I was, I wrote it October 21st. I believe the next school committee was either like two days later, and then I had some testing done. I was at Haywood that night, so I couldn't read it, and I didn't feel like having Lisa read it, because it was, because I'm the president, and I wanted you guys to hear from me. So I said to Lisa, "Let me hold off till the next school committee meeting, because I do want to read it myself," and it was completely unavoidable, I couldn't make the last meeting.
Oh, that's understandable. I just didn't want, I wanted to clear up that misunderstanding of mine. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. With that, we're going to move on. We had created this meeting really to focus on just a couple of things this evening, because we'll have our regular school committee meeting next week. So focus today is our COVID-19 facilities update. I did just want to make a couple of comments that at next week's meeting, we will be addressing more of the COVID-related items, such as, you know, instructional matters, school lunches. We've received some communications from some teachers about school lunches, and we want to address some of those, some of the items that have come into the school committee. But I did, so I just wanted to acknowledge that we got those, but we'll be discussing that next week, as well as other things. But tonight, we're going to focus on the facilities. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Kazivan, and I'm sure he'll probably call on Mr. Moulton as well, as needed, to talk about the facilities piece of it, the ventilation, and introduce our guest. And with that, I will turn it over.
Just in the nick of time, you've, thank you, Madam Chair, for delaying as long as you could. I was having some difficulty, and hopefully you can hear me. I think you guys can see me. I'm not sure at this point, but, so, thank you, Madam Chair. So several months ago, probably dating back July, we were in the throes of just getting ready to come back to school, and there were a lot of things that we had to do. And the MTA sent out a, really, a global request for information on a list of things, everything from, well, HVAC to PPE, et cetera. So it really was the beginning of trying to, you know, looking at our own, looking inward and looking at what we had. And so we started the process of looking at our facilities. And Mr. Moulton and his crew started right off the bat, and we went about the task of going through, making sure that things were working. We changed out filters. We did all of those, you know, all of those things, as we would normally do, quite frankly, at the beginning of the school year. But what we knew right off the bat is that we were going to need, really, some experts to come in to, you know, to evaluate and to gather some data about a lot of things, but certainly airflow, et cetera. So our good friends to the north in Winchonan, a great colleague in front of mine, I was asking around, and she said, "I've got this fantastic gentleman and company that you definitely have to, you have to contact." And we did, and the gentleman that I'm speaking of today is Mike Netto, and he is the Director of Engineering for Efficient Facility Solutions. And quite frankly, over the past eight weeks, I would say it's about roughly eight weeks, and I'll get into why this took so long, but we've learned more about, I know that I have learned more about airflow and ventilators and actuators, pneumatic systems. I could just keep going. But we really have, we've had a real, an education, quite frankly, on our systems and how they work and how they were designed. So what I know, and folks know I like to talk, but I very rarely talk about things that I know very little about, and guess what? This is one of them. But what I could say is Mike and his team have done an exhaustive analysis, data collection, as we talked about, on our mechanical systems, specifically airflow, et cetera. And what I believe you all have received a copy, but I believe it's a 142-page report, give or take, as far as, you know, we can wade through that later. But what I'd like to do now, quite frankly, is introduce Mr. Mike Netto and allow him, Madam Chair, to give an overview and kind of the state of the, you know, of our system.
Great, thank you, Dr. Kazivan, and welcome, Mr. Netto. We can't wait to hear from you.
Evening, everyone, and thank you for the kind words, Chris. Mr. Jeff Marquise just piqued my interest, because it appears as though he's in either a boiler room plant or something similar, so perhaps I'm envious of his location at the moment. At any rate, as Dr. Kazivan said, I was contacted, I believe in the beginning of September, by Mr. Moulton, and we discussed what Efficient Facility Solutions could do for your district. And I'm more than happy to get into great detail with any aspects of the report, and I apologize for its tardy submission. I realize, hot off the press before this meeting, I don't expect anyone to have had an opportunity to review it in any thorough fashion, but I may start by just painting a global picture of what it is that we did. We came into the facility, and we acquired original design drawings and specifications. Those date back to 1997 and '98, and afforded us an opportunity to get to know the building and how it was intended to operate, both the renovated middle school, which was formerly the high school, as well as the addition, which presently serves as the current high school. Once we were able to look through the design documents and obtain a bit of the material submittals for the equipment that was installed, we went into the field and we began investigating equipment, both in classrooms and in general office spaces. Dr. Kazivan had alluded to the duration of which it took, because we were really hampered with access. We had to capitalize on Wednesday's deep cleaning to get unfettered access into each classroom. And very common for these types of investigatory reports, we encountered unknowns in some issues that we troubleshoot for the district concurrently as we did our data collection. But first, I'll speak to the 60, I believe, 64-plus classrooms in your facility. Classroom spaces are primarily heated and ventilated with what's called a unit ventilator. These are the pieces of equipment that you see on the exterior wall underneath a window. And simply what they do is they draw air from the space, return air from the space, as well as outdoor air through an opening in the exterior wall and air louver. They then pass that air over, in your case, a hot water coil, discharge it through the top of the unit. That air goes out of the top of the unit, up along the exterior windows. It's a term called washing the window, and what that does is it helps offset some cold infiltration and drafts in winter months. It then travels up along the windows to the ceiling, across the ceiling, and down to the other side of the room. And they work rather effectively. They've been, they've been in use for many decades, and it's pretty much the standard for schools. Your facility has what are called pneumatic controls, and pneumatic controls have been around for over a century. As a matter of fact, they were invented by a gentleman in 1883. That gentleman then started a company called Johnson Controls, which is still around today, very successful, and happens to be the manufacturer of the controls at your school. When pneumatic controls, well, let me back up. They were cutting-edge at the time of their invention and installation. However, they're a legacy-style control, and they're rather antiquated. They do not afford much viewability, actually, they do not afford any viewability remotely, and there's minimal control that the facility operator or occupant of the room has over the equipment. At any rate, that thermostat that I'm sure you're all familiar with, that have been in the school facility, that's located on an interior wall near the doorway, controls the heating and ventilation of the unit ventilators. During our investigation, we did an exhaustive investigation of the unit ventilator, where we went in and we determined the functionality of the three-position supply fan that directly controls the amount of airflow from the unit. We also looked at hot water heating valves, which control heating output of the unit. And most importantly, we looked at outdoor air damper actuator control. To simplify, the outdoor damper actuator is what regulates the quantity of outdoor air coming into your space. And I'm sure you are all familiar or recently been aware and familiar of the terms CFM, ventilation, air exchanges, et cetera. And that was somewhat the impetus of this investigatory process that we executed. I will say this, of the 64 unit ventilators that we inspected, the majority of them are functioning well. We did discover that 17 of the unit ventilators have failed outdoor air damper actuators, and we believe that those units could be easily rectified through some troubleshooting services. I've spoken to Dr. Kazivan and Mr. Moulton about putting a threshold, if you will, a monetary threshold, on efforts expended to repair the existing actuators versus replacing with a newer style. With that said, let me pull up a spreadsheet here that quantifies, and it's in the report. I apologize for not having the page number out, but overall, the unit ventilators in your school are functioning well. There are a few that are presently providing minimal outdoor air. As mentioned, it's due to, often due to the failed outdoor air damper actuator, and some have lower amounts of outdoor air furnished to the area due to adjustments on the unit's linkage. One of the most important points I want to share as a result of our investigation is we determined that the units were designed back in the 90s to close the outdoor air damper when the individual unit ventilator went into a heating mode. That was designed by the consulting engineers that supported the AE firm prior to the construction of the facility, and it's an inherent limitation that your facility has. It's not a result of maintenance. It's not a result of a commissioning of the unit that was not done properly during construction. So it presents a challenge for your district as the weather gets colder in the upcoming months here, and the units do enter into a heating mode for that period. As mentioned, the outdoor air damper will close, which virtually eliminates the drawing of outdoor air into the space. When you look at the spreadsheet, you'll notice that some of the units that have failed actuators still have some reported outdoor air, and that's due to the fact that these dampers have a neoprene or foam gasket around them, and after 20-plus years of use, that gasketting, it basically erodes, and the seal at which the damper makes is not perfect, so some air will be drawn in. I don't know if we want to, if you would like me to stop here and entertain questions pertaining to that aspect of our report, Dr. Kazivan and Rick? I know I just uploaded a lot of information there, and I hope I'm not being too detailed, but it's an important note I wanted to make.
Yeah, does the committee or anyone have any questions that they would have at this point? I don't see anybody. Chris, do you have anything to add at this point?
No, I think that, again, we, you know, certainly, I've heard this, so I think that I'm going to let, definitely, we're going to go on a little bit more. I'll talk about the, you know, the Amaya grant later, and obviously, Mike is, you know, talking about some of the things that have, you know, that have either broken or not working on those 17. And I think as we move forward, I think more questions will come, I would think. So I'll just, I'll just hold till now.
Chris, I'm just going to ask one quick question to Mike. Can you just answer me, the control system we're talking about, is the entire school, the entire building, middle of high school and central office, is it all Johnson Control?
Yes, it is. It is entirely controlled by the Johnson Controls pneumatic system. Okay. With a compressor in the boiler room and multiple zones served by two 15 PSI occupied, 20 PSI unoccupied air pressure.
But the building management itself, it's a single head-end unit, one software?
As a matter of fact, no, there is no centralized building automation system. Now, there is, there is a rather new, recent technology controller utilized for your biomass boiler that was, I began, installed in 2015. That was not included in the scope of this investigation, but I will say, the programming on, that device is a Jace, if you're familiar with it. I imagine you are, by a Tridium Jace, and it potentially could be utilized in conjunction with any replacement controllers in your school. So you are in good shape to add either standalone devices or an entire new VAS.
Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Okay, so I'll continue. That was a rather detailed explanation of the classroom heating and ventilation system. In the report, I believe it's in the beginning, there's a photograph. The way that we measured the airflow is through what's called an air hood, and it's a device that simply has a large skirt to it, and you'd rather just place it right on top of the unit ventilator and give it a few moments to stabilize, and it records the airflow through the hood, which in turn is, calculates the flow through the unit ventilator. To get outdoor air measurements, we went outside of the facility, measured the majority of the outdoor air at the louvers, and then we also have some other methods where we were not able to... And then we also have some other methods, where we were not able to get access to those louvers, whether they're on the second floor or um, atop a roof, et cetera. Um, I want to note that your school is designed not only to have these unit ventilators provide heat and ventilation, um, but they have a general exhaust system. So each classroom has a ceiling, ceiling mounted exhaust register. And it's uh, we're, I'm sure all familiar with them, a twenty-four by twenty-four square ceiling tile with an opening and a dedicated exhaust fan. There are forty-eight exhaust fans at your school, draw air from that classroom out and expel it either through the rooftop or the sidewall, exterior wall of your facility. Um, and all of those exhaust fans are functioning well. Uh, there's a few of them that have lower than design intent airflow rates, but some simple housekeeping and maintenance, I feel, will restore those to design parameters. So again, you have your unit ventilator drawing outdoor air into the space, conditioning it and discharging it, and then this general exhaust system drawing air out. Um, so the intent is that as you bring air in and it washes through the room, you're expelling it at the same time. This all contributes to the rate at which you're able to exchange air within the space. So the good news is you are accomplishing this. Um, with the exception of those rooms, as I noted, that I do believe could be rectified in short order. Uh, moving on from the classrooms, you have a good amount of administrative areas. Um, the middle school administrative offices, the middle school guidance counseling area, high school administrative offices, the media center in the high school and the Kiva. Those areas are conditioned by larger centralized rooftop equipment. Um, you may or may not have seen it, it's uh, positioned well in the facility, I believe. But they're the large sheet metal structures that reside on the top of the roof. And very similar to a unit ventilator, which is much smaller, the units draw air back from your space, they mix it or they may not mix it with outdoor air, they filter it, heat it and send it back into the space. Um, and I'm happy to report that all of those units are functioning and functioning well. Three of the four units that we tested met or exceeded design parameters, which is great news. Um, the one unit that fell short on the supply side uh, treats the media center. Now, the outdoor air, the amount of outdoor air furnished by that unit, um, I believe is in line with the design intent from the late nineties. Um, it's just that the supply air, I believe, is thirty percent lower than what it should be. So as I mentioned moments ago, um, a simple investigation of the supply fan blades, they tend to get uh, fouled with dust and grime over the years, as well as a cleaning of the hot water coil uh, will reduce the pressure drop across the area and should increase the supply air. But there was nothing that we noted um, that was egregious or required immediate um, media rectification. Uh, there is one unit in your school that does provide cooling, that is HU1. And that is a unit that conditions the Kiva area and a former audiovisual room that's off your media center. Um, the unit is functioning. I believe Mr. Moulton has said that uh, in recent months, maybe six months ago, a service company came out and had to do some work on the cooling side of it. Uh, I would, I'll take a moment now and just note that that unit being nearing twenty-three years of commercial operation is towards the end of its commercial life expectancy. So I, I would advise that the district begin planning for the replacement of that unit. Um, you'd be best served doing that legwork now upfront than waiting till it failed completely and having to do some type of emergency replacement. Um, however, its age obviously does not affect and impact in any way the ability for it to furnish ventilation and uh, condition the spaces. Um, so the central equipment, as mentioned, does the majority of your offices. Um, the unit ventilators do almost all of your classrooms. There are some smaller heating and ventilating units that do areas such as um, the maintenance shop outside of Mr. Moulton's area. Um, there is a computer lab. Um, I'm getting pretty familiar with your room numbers at the facility. I believe it is uh, is it G3? Uh, G4, I believe, is on the ground level of the high school. Um, that unit's operating well. Um, supply air is a bit lower than uh, design parameter, but it is functioning. Um, the one unit that we discovered was completely offline is HV4. And that does room G3, close to G4. Um, when we investigated the unit, we found that the supply fan belt had been removed and de-energized, the unit had been de-energized locally. We executed a bit of troubleshooting to see if we could get it back online and do some testing, but I've been in conversation with Mr. Moulton in the last few days and we believe that uh, again, some simple troubleshooting um, can get the unit online. So for the time being, again, to reiterate, you presently do not have any outdoor air or conditioning in room G3. Um, so I've touched a bit on the controls, we've spoken about the unit ventilator, the airflow data acquisition method, central equipment. Um, I'll speak a little bit more on your automated controls because I feel as though your facility and your district has a, a great opportunity to reduce energy consumption and save quite a bit of money. Um, I gave a, a bit of an overview of this pneumatic control approach, but basically it um, requires a, an air compressor, much like many of you, I'm sure, have uh, in your garages or workshops to inflate tires, et cetera. That air compressor um, discharges compressed air through a series of small plastic tubes. Those tubes then go to thermostats, to hot water valves, to dampers, uh, et cetera. Because the integrity of those tubes has been, have been compromised over the last two-plus decades, the system is not operating well. Most importantly, your school is operating twenty-four hours a day in an occupied mode. What that means is that two o'clock in the morning or eleven o'clock at night, you're heating these large spaces with outdoor air. So that's consuming a great deal of propane, biomass and electricity that's not needed. So what we do as design engineers and facility operators is when persons are not in the facility, we will close outdoor air dampers because it's not necessary to ventilate if there are no persons within. And that significantly increases the amount of energy required to condition the space. We also lower the space temperature set points. So for instance, if you have a seventy or seventy-one degree heating set point in a classroom during the day, we would lower that to say sixty-two degrees at night. Um, so there's an opportunity to save a great amount of energy and in turn money by replacing those controls and whether that is through a um, a large effort in a centralized uh, approach or through individual room blocks and/or equipment blocks, um, there's many ways to do it. So I think that captures the bulk of the report. Um, and there's about, I think it's, let me just look here. It's about the first forty-five or so pages of the report that are the meat and potatoes um, of our findings. And then we have some supplemental data. Uh, there is, there are some sheets that were required to include that from our data collection instruments that um, tell you the numerical values that we utilize to calculate air flows. And then I also discovered your original Johnson Controls Automatic Temperature Controls Material Submittal that we scanned and included for your use, which um, has a lot of great uh, historical information in there. So I hope um, I hope I painted a good picture of the process and the equipment that you have. I hope I haven't been too detailed, but by all means, if you have specific questions, I'd be more than happy to delve into them.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes, please.
Okay, so um, what, what have we done? So obviously you've just heard a great deep, you know, a very detailed um, report on, you know, what took close to sixty-eight weeks and now you can understand why. If you have forty-eight exhaust fans and sixty-plus rooms and, I mean, it takes a long time and, you know, certainly we've um, and only being able to do it on days such as Wednesdays and Thursday afternoons in order to keep the traffic um, of quote-unquote visitors, although Mike's been there so much, I'm not sure we can classify him as a visitor any longer. Um, but the, the, the idea of this is that once we started to um, understand that there was these seventeen um, rooms, we, we started immediately to um, fashion a plan to figure, you know, to figure out how exactly we're going to address each of these items. And I know that for what he, he's certainly giving, uh, he's not doing it justice because he and his partner also fixed a lot of things as they were, as they were going through, um, if they found, you know, small things here or there. Um, matter of fact, yesterday they were, it was, uh, I know that his partner was in yesterday um, and fixed a, a unit and actually was finishing up some of the report as well. So the, the fact of the matter is that we have a plan. Um, the plan is that uh, we've already reached out to Maya, which uh, you know, we, we said, look, this is what we want to do with these actuators and um, and we just had this detailed reporter, it was on its way. Um, Maya loved the idea, quite frankly, and I'm actually said, told Anne-Marie who wrote the grant, um, and Rick, um, that it was their best submittal uh, to date. Um, and that they were going to push very hard for the entire ten thousand dollars. So i- in any event, what, what we have to do is we have to provide, or at least to go out and seek um, at least three quotes on work to be um, done. It's just, it's the law. Um, we've already though, have uh, looked at mostly Rick's um, lines, uh, you know, maintenance lines and have, you know, consolidated funds in order to move immediately to those rooms. Um, um, and, you know, Mike, as Mike puts it, you know, to go through, um, investigate them, you know, and then figure out the exact fix if possible, but then, but keep moving through, um, because some of them, you know, again, they don't, they haven't, um, they haven't completely gone through all of these, you know, piece by piece, but feel, I think, as Mike said, it feels pretty confident that um, these, these items can be um, fixed, for lack of a better word, I suppose. Um, so I think that we're, we're ready to move forward on that, uh, meaning as soon as uh, we legally, legally can. Um, and Rick, do you want to speak to that process at all or just to that?
Um, we've actually, no, I guess we've actually, I've actually reached out to three companies, gotten responses uh, from two, uh, waiting for a third, so we have a third one in line. Hopefully within the next twenty-four hours, I'll have that third one in line. Uh, so that we've, you know, we've got uh, three bids in, so. But I feel fairly confident we can move ahead pretty quickly with this.
Thank you. And so what I've gone on and I spoke with Eric and Alisa earlier today. Um, so what I, what I did is I took some of the early information um, in terms of the OA or outside air, um, CFM information per classroom. And we put that in a, really a couple of different um, spreadsheets. And to look at, if we use the uh, and I believe uh, Ashra sixty-two point one eighty-nine, which uh, the, which was um, uh, which was probably, well, certainly was used when um, we had this system installed, um, that, that magic number of ten CFM per individual in classrooms, because people, you know, we're, we've been talking about this quite a bit. Um, and what I, what we did is we took that information and actually compared it in real time, meaning that we know that we only have about a quarter of our students actually in place. Okay, and by the way, it isn't just students, it's human beings. So you'll hear me kind of escalate, escalate our new word, I mean, between uh, students and human beings, but you have to add in the adults that are in the rooms as well. And we've done that. And, and, and in some cases, um, where it's not at, we used fourteen human beings as kind of our base number. Okay? Because again, this really has everything to do with COVID and um, the numbers of kids that we could fit into the room in a general sense, so we use fourteen, using um, a hundred, uh, hundred and forty CFM is kind of our, kind of, you know, our benchmark. Um, and again, very happy to say, as Mike pointed out, that many of our units, well, uh, at least eighty or whatever, whatever seventeen from sixty-four, um, might be, um, were well, well, were well um, positioned to do that. Even some of the ones that didn't quite come up to, up to spec, just given the amount of human beings that we have in the rooms, um, you know, met that ten CFM standard. It doesn't mean that we're not going to, of course, go through the investigative process of those seventeen, um, we're going to do that. Um, but there is the point of which we can, and again, I'm gonna let Mike talk to this, but if it, if it's, if it's outside air that is the concern, um, the vents can be manually um, opened, I hope I'm saying that right, Mike, um, or positioned um, to uh, to draw in the max amount of outside air to, to satisfy that. And I'll let Mike speak to that, because I may have overspoke or maybe not have done enough.
Uh, no, that's, that's quite correct. So um, I wanted to, if persons have the report open, if you jump to page forty-one, anyone who has a copy of the report in PDF, if you go to page forty-one, there's a photograph there, it's figure twenty-three. And what that's showing is that's a very small uh, piece of the plastic tubing. That plastic tubing has a crack in it, crack in it, and we discovered that on the media center hot water heating belt. So multiple times during our investigation, we found the media center to be upwards of eighty, eighty-five degrees. Uh, the point I'm making here is that one small crack in a pneumatic line is enough to take a unit entirely offline. So as Dr. Cassivan mentioned, though we went in, we removed panels and we did an exhaustive uh, investigation on each unit ventilator, we did not trace out all of the pneumatic lines to the individual components within. So I do feel confident that the majority of the seventeen unit ventilators without outdoor air damper actuation may have a simple fix such as replacing a section of that pneumatic line. Now, if we discover that the actual pneumatic actuator has failed, um, it would be my recommendation, rather than uh, spending the monies to replace a legacy outdated component, I would advise transitioning that unit ventilator over to a modern direct digital control actuator that relies on electricity, um, twenty-four volts alternating current in a two-to-ten volt DC uh, input voltage to control that unit ventilator. Um, that's some technical lingo, but the point is you don't want to spend today's money to go backwards in yesterday's technology when it would most likely be about, thereabouts the same cost. Um, so worst-case scenario, if another investigation of the seventeen unit ventilators determines that the dampers have failed and with everything else, there's equipment lead time and if you want to maintain persons in the space, you can physically open that damper. Um, it would require a person entering the room in the morning, obviously, and placing some kind of stop in the unit ventilator position, uh, not, I'm sorry, not position, but um, the actuator, there's a, there's a way to hold it open. Um, and then a person would then have to come into the area at the end of the day and remove it. Now, I do have to caution, that approach relies on, it relies on memory and persons executing the work and it does open up the potential for freezing of the coil if it was to be held open overnight or over a weekend period in low ambient air. So it is a method that can be used, um, I would say as a last resort to keep persons in the area and maintain ventilation. Um, I will also say, your facility does have uh, operable windows. So there is also the option to crack open or open to some degree those windows. However, that approach will not function, in my opinion, as well as a mechanical ventilation through the unit ventilator as it was designed to do. Um, as I mentioned, I mean, fifteen minutes ago, that piece of equipment draws air in, sends it up the windows over to the other side of the room through the ceiling, et cetera, and it creates a destratification and mixing as well as exhausting of the air. So you do have options. Um, again, uh, some that are more laborious than others, uh, some that are more costly than others, and I believe it um, will have to be, you know, debated and discussed uh, by your committee and the district as well. Does, I hope that answered your question.
So I'll end in this regard, is that what I think you're, what we're, what you're hearing is that there's really a multi-phase discussion here, right? So if we're talking about phase one, which is, phase one in anything is really the investigation part, but, and we've done that, we've had a thorough investigation, uh, data, um, gathering, we have that. Phase two is really about looking at what is um, uh, inoperable or needs uh, at least a fix, and we have that, we have that information, and we know um, approximately costs, we, you know, we, we've, we've gathered those resources and um, will, will act accordingly immediately, uh, as soon as we can. Um, and have a, what I'll say as a backup to, until that happens, we have the stop, you know, uh, in terms of keeping the actual, you know, keeping them open. Really, the next phase is phase three, because what I, what I'm hopeful you're hearing is that, look, we, we have a system that has actually worked as designed um, twenty-five, twenty-six years ago, it's, it's done what, exactly what it was, it was built to do. Um, I will say that it was well-maintained, one of the things that Mike uh, talked about earlier to us, is that our, you know, that that our maintenance staff and our custodial staff have done a nice job, because it, it could easily have gone, looked much worse, or, or responded much worse, right? But really, the next bigger question, and next, and this will really involve, I would think, on both towns, but certainly the town of Templeton, when we start getting into green communities, um, which we are a part of, which the school is part of green communities, which was established a couple of years ago, and we did reach out to the green communities, um, uh, you know, a contact person, not, not with the town, we haven't, we have, you know, again, we wanted to inform the school committee, but much of, or many of the things that we're talking about in terms of actuators and, and the, the things that, there very well could be monies available through green communities, um, that will, will significantly um, offset a, a cost of if you were to, you know, wholesale change out whatever, um, mechanical piece that were, you know, that would fit, um, like, like a lot of grants, or, you know, it had to be a certain fit, but we, we were told that the things that we were looking to replace or change, or whatever the case is, did fit at least the um, uh, the schematic of these green community grants, um, or, or monies, um, and that needs to go through the town, and that's a, you know, that's certainly not up for discussion today. Uh, but it's certainly a discussion that we need to have moving forward, um, because we just can't keep throwing good money after bad, right? So, you know, these things are old, they're starting to, um, they're starting to, you know, um, show their age. And so I would really see that as phase three and four, um, moving, moving up, but overall, um, we think that we have a pretty good um, handle on it now, um, and we have a plan moving forward. So I guess what I would say to the committee, does anyone have any general questions about that, or something that we might have missed?
Dr. Casavant, could I just make, make one comment, and Madam Chair, um, and as far as the green communities go, um, we did look into that about three weeks ago, and because we weren't sure if we were going to be part of the green community application, when the town applied for it, they would have had to specify that the school was part of their green communities application, and knock on wood, or whatever you want to say, we were, so the school is considered part of the green communities for the town of Templeton, so uh, we may have availability of, of those funds, so. Just wanted to throw that in there.
Great, thank you. I think that's um, wonderful news, and a great avenue to pursue for that phase three uh, approach uh, that Dr. Casavant mentioned. Um, so I just want to make sure that I understand this and kind of put it in simplistic terms. Um, the findings as of today, and what we're able to remediate immediately through manual fixes and whatnot, um, we're able to keep people in the building, in all of the rooms. Um, and then we are looking at those short-term and then longer-term fixes, is, is that kind of what I'm hearing?
That's exactly what you're hearing, yes. Yeah, I think uh, um, Mr. Neto will agree with that, that the basic, basically the building was in pretty good shape, so.
Yes, agreed.
Okay, right, because I think that for our community, that's what we want people to understand, that although there are things that we need to address, um, we are able to continue on as we are with some of these manual interventions until we can get the short-term fixes done um, with that grant that hopefully we'll find out if we're approved for at the full amount, um, and then longer term with the, the fixes. So I think that's um, excellent news to hear, um, and, and let the community know, um, parents, students, et cetera, the staff, um, that the building's ventilation um, is, is, is good.
So, given that, and you have a hundred and forty-six pages to read tonight, um, class, I, I, you know, there's, there's a lot to digest, and there will be a test tomorrow, um, so, but I mean, that, I think that's important to read, it's actually, I, I did get through a couple pages, but I, I want to tell you, of course, we've been talking with Mike for the last six weeks, I think that you'll honestly find it very informative and, and really easy to read, it's, it's, it really is, it breaks it down very easily, so. Um, again, we have the plan, we're, we're waiting for those, those hoops that we must, we must as a, um, you know, as a public body to go through, and we're going to do that, um, but we're ready to move on that as soon as, um, as, as we are able.
Um, are we going to, or can we convene our facility subcommittee, uh, maybe to kind of uh, give you a quick avenue to vet anything that might need some school committee eyes on it immediately? Um, I know that we've got a meeting next week, but then we won't have another one for several other weeks, and um, knowing that time is of the essence, um, on a lot of these things, um, if, if we can get our, maybe our facility subcommittee together, um, and help you along the process any way we can.
I think that that was, I think that will, um, the facility subcommittee will be meeting, when I say quite a bit, we're gonna have to meet um, a lot more regularly, just given, given what I've just, we've laid out here for phases, and again, in terms of the conduit of information.
Does any other committee member have any questions, either Mr. Neto, or just in uh, observations or questions uh, for Dr. Casavant, or Mr. Moulton at this point?
I have about two hundred and fifty, Margaret, but I'll finish reading the report, and then um, and then we'll have a discussion, okay?
Good, and considering you're probably one of the few of us that actually understands what's going to be in all of the, the, the reports in those tables, um, I think that's good that maybe you hold off and ask them um, once you get through the report, so thank you, thank you, Jeff, for giving that the attention. Um, anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, so seeing none, I'd like to thank um, Mr. Neto for uh, presenting to the committee this evening the information, um, we'll, we'll be spending some, some evening time reviewing, um, and uh, it was, it appears to be very thorough of just with the amount of pages and what I was able to quickly flip through, um, and good, as I said, good news for the district, um, that we're, we're in good shape to remediate and move forward, um, unlike some other areas around, so um, we thank you for your time and attention to the district, and, and also Dr. Casavant, and especially you, Mr. Moulton, I know um, you've got your hands in this as well. Well, thank you.
You're very welcome, um, my pleasure.
Great, um, you're welcome to hang in with us if you'd like, if you want to sign off, that's certainly acceptable as well.
Okay, very good, um, and at any time, uh, Ms. Moulton or Dr. Casavant, you know, just reach out, um, I'm sure, after you have a few days to go over the report, um, I can answer questions, and if the committee uh, has, or committee or townspeople have any questions, if you want to submit them to Rick, who can get them over to me, I'd be happy to respond to those as well. All right, have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, thank you, Mike.
All right, thank you for, um, for getting Mike to come this evening and present that information. Um, any other last minute questions or comments before we move on to the new business on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, uh, we do have some new business, we received a notice from our district treasurer um, about, just about two weeks ago now, indicating that she needed to resign, and her last day needed to be a hard stop on uh, this coming Friday, as a matter of fact. Um, and our treasurer, she's wonderful, she's agreed, you know, if she can help out or whatever, um, but she really needed to uh, move on. So we had posted the position, um, I know it was out on Facebook and several other places around, um, wherever we normally post. We received one uh, resume, and I apologize, I have a big truck driving behind me in case you're hearing noise. Um, we received one resume, and um, I had asked uh, Ms. Geister, who couldn't be here tonight, to go ahead and perform an interview. Um, so I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Casavant to kind of uh, speak to the interview that happened, but I do want to just let everyone know that the person who applied for the job was uh, Vicky Chardier, one of our school committee members. So one of the first things we did, uh, just to ensure that there was no conflicts uh, with the school committee member performing the treasurer duties, is we did consult Mass General Law, um, and MGL seventy-one sixteen A speaks to the fact that the committee shall appoint a secretary and a treasurer, who may be the same person, but who need not be members of the committee. So that statement there says they can be, but they don't need to be. Um, and it goes on to say the treasurer shall, shall receive and take charge of all money belonging to the district, shall pay any bill of the district, which shall have been approved by the committee. The committee may appoint an assistant treasurer, who need not be a member of the committee, and who shall, in the absence of the treasurer, perform the duties. Um, the treasurer and assistant treasurer shall be persons of ability and experience, and may by vote of the committee be compensated for their services. There's a little bit more in the law, but I thought those were the relevant pieces. So as far as um, conflict, the, um, it is clear that there is no conflict of a, a school committee member performing the role of treasurer for the district. Um, so with that being said, uh, we moved ahead and said, okay, so let's uh, go through our process, which would be to conduct an interview, um, which was kind of a two-pronged approach, one would be on the actual responsibility piece of what the treasurer does, which Ms. Geister uh, obviously has more intimate knowledge than probably any of us, other than Mrs. Chardier would have. Um, and I as well did, um, I actually contacted and did a reference check, which I'll talk about in, in just a minute, but I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Casavant, if he can um, speak for Ms. Geister and uh, himself about the, the interview and the skills and knowledge.
So, uh, first I want to just recognize, um, Tammy Collier, she, um, for the balance of my time here, she's been, um, you know, she, she has been our treasurer, and I have to say to you that um, she has done, um, just fantastic, she has always available, um, and really, she has stayed on a lot longer, I think that, you know, than she planned, um, uh, you know, and we, I couldn't, I can't thank her enough for doing that. She realizes how important that position is, it, it is vital, um, uh, you know, and we, you know, we really do live or die by, you know, by, by the treasurer. And so I want to thank her for all her hard work, and she just was, um, just fantastic, but, um, she, she, you know, she had to resign, it was, and we, we completely understood. So in terms of, um, you know, Ms. Geister, you know, interviewed um, Chardier just the other day, and um, a- again, there, you know, in terms of relationships, uh, and really being on the same page, certainly the business manager and the um, kind of have to be, uh, they, they have to be on the same page of these type of things, and you know, I, I will say that uh, Anne Marie was obviously very pleased. Um, it's hard to find, and I know that you, uh, Ms. Hughes, you'll go into the reference check, but certainly you have to know that, um, you know, superintendents have our ways as well, and we, we, we call around sometimes too, about people. And um, although I tried very hard, I couldn't find one person to say anything negative, and I tried really hard, um, I really did. Um, I really, really did, but I, I could not. Uh, but in all seriousness, um, you know, attention to detail and just the knowledge of, of, of what it takes to be treasurer was, was, um, was ample. We also, by the way, we did reach out to our, our bidding firm, just to, we just really covered the bases, just to make sure, you know, can you be, you know, a treasurer in multiple places, can you do these type of things, and all of those answers, and we expected the answers to be yes. Um, as a matter of fact, they were happy uh, to hear, um, that someone from another regional would be, would, you know, uh, would be interested, I'm in this role, because it is, it is a very difficult, um, a role to fill and to, um, you know, and to find someone with that much experience. So I have to say on behalf of, you know, certainly Anne Marie, um, that, that she, that she was very pleased, obviously, and um, recommend, recommend to the committee through me, um, um, for her appointment.
Thank you. Um, and as, as I said, I did uh, reach out and do a reference check, um, and um, it was very positive. Um, you know, it's tough, because obviously, we here on this committee know Vicky professionally through our school committee work, so we do know, um, her work ethic, but it was nice to hear it from her work reference um, of everything that she brings to the table, so it was really, um, coupled with Dr. Casavant has already said, you know, the, the things that she'll bring into the district, um, should be, um, you know, keeping up with everything Tammy's put in place, um, and, and keeping us on track from a treasurer perspective. Um, and considering that, that the treasurer is a position that reports to us, the school committee, um, you know, it's, it's, I think it's actually really beneficial to us to have someone who knows what the school committee does, and also what that treasurer position does, and what that interface is, so. Um, with that, um, I did want to just turn it over to the committee and see if anyone had any questions in particular for Vicky that they'd like to ask her. Um, because although time is of the essence, we, um, and it would be awesome if we could make um, a motion and a recommendation, potential appointment tonight. Obviously, the committee needs to be on board, um, as a group with what we do. Um, so hopefully tonight, if there's any questions you have, um, we can start there, and then we'll see where that leads us. So were there any questions or comments from the committee? I don't, I don't see any. I, I think that the, um, Jeff, did, I'm sorry, Jeff, did you have a question?
Yeah, was, did we, was, is this, um, is this position a pot time, is that what we're saying, um, Margaret?
Yes, and actually, that was going to be part of what my question was going to be, um, because Mr. Chardier is the treasurer, um, or, uh, or fills the role of the treasurer for Neshoba Regional, um, and I just wanted to, to hear from her, you know, balancing the time requirement that we have, um, which is minimal, but I'll let her speak to what, um, what she's learned, as she researched the position and how she'll balance all that. So, Vicky, I'll, I'll kind of turn it over to you, I think, if you would like to say a few words.
Sure, so I, I talked to Tammy a little bit just to get a understanding of what, you know, she does as her role as treasurer. Um, my job at Neshoba kind of morphed into a bigger, like, I started as a payroll specialist, I became a benefit specialist, an HR specialist, and the treasurer portion morphed together to create a role that, you know, is a little bit different than the treasurer's role at Narragansett, which, which is fine. Um, I talked to Tammy just a little bit, just to get an understanding of, you know, what she does as treasurer, and it's about four to six hours a week, um, which I, I have plenty of time. My husband, when he's working, he's working until ten o'clock at night, so I have plenty of time to do that, I'm not the least bit concerned about that, and um, you know, I, I was thrilled to talk to Tammy and find out that all of the reps that she pretty much works with, with the different banks, uh, some of the same ones that I work with, um, a couple that I haven't talked to in a few years, because we just, you know, they've changed positions or whatever, so I was thrilled to hear that too. Um, I have, so, that being said, I have a working relationship with quite a few of these people. Um, and, you know, I'm, if given the opportunity, I'm really looking forward to being part of the operations of the Narragansett Central Office. Um, yeah, I, I, I'm excited. So I don't know if there's any other questions, or if I answered your question, Margaret, I think I did, it's, it's about the time I have. So I have, I, I have enough of it, plenty of time.
Great, thank you. Um, anyone else have any, any questions or, or comments or observations for Vicky at this point? Right, seeing none, um, if uh, someone is so inclined, I would entertain a motion to appoint Victoria Chardier to the treasurer position for the Narragansett Regional School District, subject to successful contract negotiation, um, that we would delegate that responsibility out to Dr. Casavant to perform um, at the current rate of pay for the treasurer. And I apologize, because I don't have that number in front of me, and I don't know if we can find it.
It's all moved.
Okay, so I do have a motion, I hope, Susan, you were able to capture that, or we can go to the video. Um, do I have a second on that?
A second.
And I have a second for Mr. Marks, Mrs. Trifilo was the, the motion, I apologize for not saying that. Um, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote. Um, Mrs. Matson?
Yes.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Um, I'm going to, I'm sure you're gonna recuse yourself, Mrs. Chardier, from the votes, I'll skip over you. Uh, Mrs. Trifilo?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Aye.
And Mrs. Hughes says aye. So we have, um, not unanimous, because Mrs. Chardier did, I, she didn't actually, when Mrs. Chardier would- Mrs. Chardier, would you like to recuse yourself when the vote will make this official to hear it from you?
Yes, I would, please.
Okay. So, it wasn't unanimous, but it was unanimous for those who decided to vote, to appoint Mrs. Chardier as the treasurer. So, Dr. Kazivan, we'll look to you to go ahead and get the contract all signed, sealed, and delivered, and ready to present to the school committee. Hopefully, maybe we can even get that done for our next meeting next week, so. All right, thank you, Mrs. Chardier, for stepping up and wanting to help our district in that position. It's small in time requirement, but so important for the controls of the district. So, it was nice to see your interest, knowing that you have the background, as I mentioned, not just the background, but the background with another regional school district, to make that happen. So, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, the other thing, could we also send a letter of thank you to Mrs. Coller for her years of service to this district as our treasurer, wishing her well, and whatever, if you could prepare that letter and send that off, that would be awesome.
Did you want to, I just want to make, sorry, do you want us to prepare the letter for your signature, or as the secretary, you want me to send that out?
For the school committee's signature, and I'll sign on behalf of the school committee, if that is okay with the committee. Yep, and I think, Susan, we're good with the signature, so we're good. All right, so, are there any other comments? We do have a, we will have an executive session, which we'll get to in just one moment, but I wanted to just see if there are any last-minute school committee comments. Okay, I don't see any for this evening. We had no other items pop on within 48 hours. Our next meeting is scheduled for next Wednesday. There is a conflict with us being able to livestream, so we're thinking of potentially moving the meeting to Tuesday, which I know is a conflict with our Diversity, Inclusion, and Equity Subcommittee, and I'm hoping maybe we can swap the nights of those meetings. I think, Barney, have we been able to confirm if that Tuesday would work for TCTV yet? It would? Okay, so, what we'll do is, after this meeting, Mrs. Barney, you'll go ahead and text everyone, make sure we can get a quorum, but I just wanted you to get a heads-up that we are looking to move that night, and we'll also work, if that's okay with the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion Group, to swap nights and make that happen. I think that was the only other thing initially on our--
Is that at 5:00 PM, Madam Chair?
Yeah, Tuesday.
Was that meeting at 5:00?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and again, Mrs. Barney, you'll send a text, just to ensure we can, we'll have a quorum. So, the last thing is, we do have an executive session scheduled for this evening. Originally on the agenda, we weren't sure if we were going to have something, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Moulton, you're waving first? Oh, you're muted.
I'm sorry, I was just waving goodbye.
Oh, okay, well, goodbye.
Have a nice evening.
Yes, thank you. So, we originally were going to come back into open session, we thought we might have something to vote on, but we do not. So, we will not be returning from executive session this evening. So, once we go ahead and motion and go into executive session, this public portion of the meeting will be over. So, right now, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for reason number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation with the NDEA and/or UFCW, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. The meeting will not return into open session immediately following. I would entertain a motion as such.
So moved.
I have a motion for Mr. Marks, do I have a second? And I have a second for Mr. Mason. All right, we will do roll call. Mrs. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mrs. Chardier?
Yes.
Mrs. Trifilo?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Aye.
And Mrs. Hughes says aye. School committee and admin, you're going to get a separate invite for our executive session session, so just be on the lookout for that from Mrs. Barney. And for everyone else, thank you for joining us this evening, and we'll be sure to let everyone know the exact date and time of next week's meeting. So, thank you, everyone, thank you, TCTV as well.